Okay, I'm gonna figure out what I'm doing.
How are you, my dear?
So we're not doing this flag salute.
No.
We're gonna have a special treat. It's still says "Flag Salute" on the agenda, but I can just say, "Have a special treat." It's Eagle River JROTC.
Um, Marco, can you come up here? I, oh, you know what? I think, uh, Brandon was preparing tonight.
Oh, shoot. We wanted her to sing.
Let me see. We can all sing together.
Yeah, we'll just sing it together. We can put words up there for people who don't like singing. I don't know. You guys said, "I don't know." Don't even get off.
I'll sing in my band for Director Voice, loud and then, uh...
I'm not singing because I can't sing.
Marco, do you sing like she does?
Oh, no.
No.
Oh, man.
Do you sing?
Believe me.
My friend from where I first came.
We're gonna, um, will you lead us off?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll give you the mic and you can say, "You're gonna lead us off," and the words are up here. We want everyone to join in, like a sing-along.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna say a little bit about the program and the great things they've done.
And instead of the, um, recording, we're having a live singer. She's gonna start and she's gonna do a sing-along, like she's gonna ask everyone to jump in and we're gonna have the words up there to make sure everyone has success. No, 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 National Anthem. So our board member, our vice president, is going to sing. Lead us in the song.
I'm not a real singer, but I'll do it without no shame.
All right, I love it. I love it.
Hey, Jim, can I talk to you after?
Did you say "no shame"?
Uh, you mean, uh, after the school board meeting or after?
Um, so I know we're gonna do like a staff of student recognition thing, so I'll come and bring.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking, I'm, I'm considering going to the assembly right now, doing something there, but, but, but I can, tomorrow, good? You wanna call me or you wanna call you or?
Well, you call me, 'cause your schedule's way more...
Yeah, I have no idea what's going on. Uh, is your number easy to find?
Should be in my email. If it's not, I'll send it to you.
Okay, we can do that.
That's for public. So they just, they saw the list was long, so just here's the agenda. Um, wait, practice there is my guess. This one goes to...
To do what?
Oh, it's for the, um, uh, after we do the award, it's the leftover, it's just going to be big, right after the Eagle River and other awards.
And you said it's very, very important.
Yeah, the whole, right.
So should I say just right? That's different than...
No, I'm falling for that. It's Campbell.
Well, it's actually, it's not gonna matter because they're gonna come and do their talking. You wanna be first and last. When are we doing this thing during the, like, during the...
So at this time, I'd like to call our regular board, um, meeting to session, uh, to order, and it is December 3rd, 2019. Um, and at this time, um, I believe all board members are present. Thank you. And our student representative is here. Thank you, Sophie. And, uh, we have a special treat this evening. Um, instead of the "Flag Salute" this evening, I'm gonna have Tim from Eagle River High School, the principal.
Healthy.
Healthy. That's it? Yeah. Come up and introduce our special guest here and talk a little bit about what is gonna happen.
There's, um, a microphone right there. You could turn it on, Tim.
All right, good evening. Um, I'm just really proud to be here tonight and have an opportunity to kind of brag about this, uh, this group and specifically, we have a hundred and nineteen cadets at Eagle River High School, and so this is kind of just a reflection of all, a hundred and nineteen of them. Um, our program is established in 2006. Um, our academic standards for our corps is around a 3.01. Last year, we had a state champion color guard team. Three of those are representative here today. The other one is, uh, taking a practice SAT. I can't believe why they'd miss this. So the, a number of cadets won the state championship last year with a number of different color guards and drill teams. Uh, but what we're most proud of is their accomplishments with a 3.54 GPA to win the large school academic award. Um, our return rate for our program, so our freshmen, um, that come out for the program next year, sixty-four percent of those students that come out stay with the ROTC program. Our inspection history, every year we've exceeded standards and received a distinguished unit, but every three years, we have a major inspection where a Colonel from Alabama comes down to inspect the corps. And over those three years, um, each of the three years that we've had an inspection, we've received, um, we've received a distinguished unit with merit. The merit's only given to the top twenty percent of the units. Tonight, we have Cadet Riley Price. She'll be, uh, presenting the Alaska flag. She was selected as the Air Force JROTC and Air Force Association's Cadet Leadership Award for Region Four. This is Alaska, Washington, Arizona, and California. Furthermore, she went on to represent us nationally and was ranked eighth overall. In the Air Force JROTC program, there was a hundred and twenty thousand cadets and she was ranked eighth nationally. So we've done some great things at Eagle River High School. We're really, really proud of our program. Uh, Colonel Brokaw is new to our program and he's done a fabulous job, and Chief McNew has been with the program since the start in 2006. So at this time, ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the presentation of the colors and remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem. The colors are being presented this evening by the Eagle River High School Air Force JROTC Color Guard. Members are Cadets Riley Price, Chris Groom, Kayden Shade, and Color Guard Commander Cadet Sarah Price. This color guard earned the honor of Alaska State Champions and finished sixth at the National Drill Meet last year as first-year cadets. Please remain standing until the colors have left the floor. Thank you.
All right, we have a little surprise. We're all going to be singing the National Anthem together. This is a community sing-along, a cappella. I have a mic. I'm not a singer, so if you don't join in and it's just me, it's not gonna be very good, okay? So I'll start us off, but go for it and sing louder than me. Here we go. Oh, say, can you see?
By the dawn's early light, What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last beating? Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Please be seated.
It's good. I'll have a party. Nice job.
Yes, thank you. That, um, special treat, we really enjoyed that and, um, glad, uh, they could be here tonight. That was kind of a surprise. We appreciate a pers- some surprise, good surprises. Um, at this time, I'd like to take this moment to recognize that we are residing on traditional Denial Land. Um, it's very important that we recognize that and make note of it. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of Anchorage School District and this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. And now, I'd like to turn it over to our student representative, Sophia.
On behalf of the school board, we would like to thank, like to thank students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the Anchorage School District YouTube channel to watch the live stream. Recordings of meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs. My name is Sophia Maria Holder and I am the student representative to the board. I was elected to serve through the ASD Student Advisory Board, and although my votes are advisory only, I offer a student voice to this body.
Thank you. And at this time, approval of agenda, is there any dissension on the agenda or any changes, um, to be made? Seeing no dissension with the agenda, I'm, the agenda is approved. So at this time, this is our favorite part of the evening, and that's where we focus on staff, students, and community. And Dr. Bishop, would you join me up front?
Yeah, do I, are we doing the, what do we do?
So if I could have Connie O'Shamira, are they here? Yes, there they are. Connie O'Shamira and Claire. They are actually from Dwell Realty, a local, um, real estate brokerage here in Anchorage. And this, I believe, second year, Connie? Third year, third year. And I'm gonna let Connie talk a little bit about this program and I think, uh, what it's meant to our district and, uh, the, uh, community effort that she's put forth.
Well, thank you, Starr. Um, Dwell Realty has tried to determine what we could do to benefit, uh, public education and to support public education in the Anchorage School District. And so three years ago, Claire and I came up with this idea to have a creative writing contest for elementary school children. And we decided that, um, we would give out a hundred dollar prize to an elementary student, uh, eight of them. And we understand also that teachers in the elementary school and probably in other, uh, venues as well, junior high and senior high, frequently contribute some of their own personal dollars, uh, to, uh, help with their classroom supplies. So we're also giving out a hundred dollars to the winning student's teacher, uh, in recognition for their contribution. And we're very happy that the school, district, and the teachers allows us to come into, uh, and use, uh, and be a part of their curriculum, actually. Uh, so with that, I would just like to, before we give out the awards, um, the essays and the poems this year were really, uh, very heartfelt and in some cases, a little heartbreaking as well. Everybody has a home, but it's not necessarily, uh, an elaborate home, wherein we call it the trade McMansions and that sort of thing. So many of the homes that we all have are, uh, much more modest. So I just want to, rather than taking more words in your time, I just want to, this year, read a few of the, uh, essays and poems that we received. So the first one is called "My Home." The one that I call my home, the one with that tree stump, the one that I think on, the one that I rest on, the one that can be home plate or first base. So really what we're doing is we're sort of looking for that metaphor or that allegory, uh, to use, uh, as a description for home. Oh, all right, okay, so...
Here, let me hold this while you...
Uh, hold the mic while I can read, 'cause I can't see. All right. "Home is where I'm from. I'm from my reading lamp, a sliver of light in a world of darkness, Holding back the monsters my imagination creates." I do have to say that this is my favorite one. "I'm eight years old and there are eight planets. My mom cooks for me seven days a week. There are six of my artworks on the wall in my house. Living in Alaska is fun because I can ski and snowboard five months in the year. I know four times four equals sixteen. I speak three languages. I have two dogs. My family is special because eight plus seven plus six plus five plus four plus three plus two plus equals one. Big, awesome family." That's from second grade, someone in second grade. "My house." Uh, finally, I know this may sound too weird, but I also like my bathroom. I don't know why. It's just an easy way to go and escape, to be alone with my thoughts. And finally, fabric pieces surround me. I feel the patterns welcoming me in. Sit, stop, listen. My ears hear the soft whirring and buzzing of connecting threads." So, very, very nice. So, our awards are... Are you giving me the easy ones for the names to pronounce, please? Hugh McKee, uh, Teacher Kim Evans, Rabbit Creek Elementary School. Would you please come up?
I want you to stay right here until we get everybody up here, okay?
All right. Okay, Claire, you're next.
Okay, next I have Lucy Sutaki and her teacher Beth Gamble, um, with Inlet View Elementary.
Just stay right up here, okay?
So Mary Ann Valdez, Teacher Pam Osowaski, Spring Hill Elementary. All right. Thank you. You should so much. Thank you. Thank you. All right, there's one.
Uh, next I have Lynn Pinew, uh, Teacher Kara Burke, and that's with Sand Lake Elementary.
Next is Mackenzie McNulty, Teacher April Hallburn, Chinook Elementary School.
All right, next we have Tillman Really, uh, Teacher Mike Still and Linda Hewlin, um, and that's with Bowman Elementary.
Linda, it's always nice to see you up here. Thank you for your contributions. Angie Russo, Teacher Mike Still and Linda Hewlin, Bowman Elementary. Augie, congratulations. And we have one more. Emma Eden, Teacher Wayne Ashworth, Inlet View Elementary School.
Um, unfortunately, Emma wasn't able to make it today. She has come down with the flu, so we'll be presenting her award in the classroom later this week when she feels better.
So I'm gonna, we'd like to pass the mic, and so this is kind of a tradition we do. So maybe if our students would like to just say something about their school, their writing, what they liked about this, just anything.
What I liked about this is it's like you can express your feelings about your home and put it in a competition and see which one comes out the most fluent and expressful. And it's nice to hear that your writing won a competition.
I'm Tillman in fifth grade and this little moss thing on the front, pretty sure I had it in one of my dreams.
I'm Mackenzie and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Bruce and I'm in second grade.
I'm Lucy and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Hugh and I'm in sixth grade.
First grade.
I'm Ariana and I'm in sixth grade.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say again how honored I have to say that I actually, uh, work at Dwell Realty. So I'm pretty proud of our brokerage and, and the things that, uh, we do to support the community. Connie, thank you so much. Um, hopefully you'll do this again next year. Claire, thank you for all your work. And another round of hand, uh, hand of applause for our teachers and for our students. And we'll get a picture right up here.
For the next part, a focus on staff and students for the district. Uh, now that we've, uh, given our awards for writing, we have, uh, some other awards to recognize for which these students, uh, demonstrated excellence, uh, either in the classroom, on the field, on the court, in a band, all those good things. Uh, and this, uh, time that we celebrate in the board meeting is, uh, a specific dedication to those people who make ASD great. And the board decided to take time to say thank you to the students, parents, and community members and employees uh, that do so well in the district. That makes us the very best district in the nation, is what we believe all the time. All right, so would the Diamond High Boys Cross Country Team run on to the forward right here? Run on down. And is Principal Johnson Harris here? Oh, come on up. We have administration as well as these young gentlemen and their coaches. Let me say a little bit about these fellas. This year, the Diamond Gens had an undefeated season and are the 2019 cross-country running state champions. Woo! Good job, Lynx. Uh, this team had three student athletes in the top five and five student athletes in the top fifteen at the state meet. That includes all fifty-three school districts and schools, uh, that have representation in, um, our division. Boys all worked very hard over the summer and throughout the year to try and win this championship after their success last year. Every one of these runners made huge improvements from last season to this season, the largest of which was Jared Gardener? Gardner, uh, who took, uh, three minutes off his 5K time from last year. Woo-hoo! Yuh-yuh-woo! Wow. That's a lot of minutes. Congratulations on your undefeated season and the state championship victory. You make ASD great. So, you had a little insight. We would like you to, I, I'm gonna ask you to say your name and your grade. You can say your age too, like we had someone share his age, who's, I think he was six. Um, but, uh, or just your name, your grade, and, uh, either the best thing about cross-country or the best thing about being a Diamond Lynx. And then just pass the mic.
Uh, my name is Marty Rig. I'm in twelfth grade. And I think the best thing about cross-country was just the team aspect of it, like working hard every day to achieve a goal and winning state.
Uh, my name's Peter Hines. I'm also a senior and for me, running is a way to, uh, test myself physically with a group of like-minded athletes and see what I can really achieve.
Uh, my name's Tason Mackenzie and I'm in tenth grade. And I think it was the seniors this year that really pushed everybody and we'll all miss them next year.
My name's Noah Hofer. I'm in twelfth grade and I just had a great time running with a great team this year.
Uh, I'm Santiago Prosser. I'm also in twelfth grade and, uh, it was really fun to come out and win again and train hard and have fun at the same time, so.
Uh, my name's Dylan Gardner. I'm a senior and it was just fun running with all these, uh, wonderful guys. It's been a great four years.
My name's Jerry Gardner. I'm a sophomore and I just am really thankful for my coaches for pushing me.
Uh, I'm Coach Norman. Uh, these guys have pushed themselves really hard over the last bunch of years, but you don't notice. These guys are actually pretty awesome students as well. They, uh, perform pretty awesome in the classroom, not just on the field. And so it's been really fun working with them and seeing them achieve a lot, both in running and in school.
I'm, uh, I'm Coach Keller and it was, uh, it was a great honor to be, uh, to see this, witness this the second year in a row. And, uh, these guys, there's a lot of talent here, but, uh, the work ethic, I've never seen it before in any of our teams. And, um, they really just, they put it out the whole time and it was, uh, it was great to witness. And I'd like to give a shout out to Nick Normandin. I've witnessed his coaching for all these years and he's just a phenomenal coach. So I appreciate being part of the team.
My name's Scott Campbell. Um, I, I'll echo the same thing that, that Coach Keller said, but I will add to it that maybe my favorite thing besides these guys' work ethic and the dedication of the coaches, this summer was the weather was probably the best thing that happened.
I'm Andrea Holt. I'm an assistant principal at Diamond, standing in for, uh, Tina Johnson-Harris, uh, this evening. But I just wanna say, it is such an honor and a privilege to get to come to work every day with these kinds of students and teachers, coaches, who inspire these kids. And like Coach Normandin said, these kids, these young adults have an incredible work ethic that show, that shows not only as they're running, but in the classroom as well. So they're athletes and scholars.
All right, and ladies and gentlemen, uh, these Diamond Lynx and their coaches, uh, they are who make ASD. And if you could help me, they make ASD great. And now they're gonna take a picture and we'll be right up with the next team. Let's get a quick photo, gentlemen. You're probably used to photos since you took it at states, so you can... Please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, the Lady Wolverines are the 2019 cross-country state champions. South, woo! And they did have to run on the street this year and they had these nice bright safety vests to make sure that the cars watch out for them. South had a large, dynamic team this year and this group of young women gave it all throughout the season. Even with wildfires and the busing challenges we had, these ladies overcame, stayed positive, and brought home South's first state trophy for girls cross-country, woo! Yeah, there you go. The Lady Wolverines showed impressive camaraderie and team spirit, also winning the academic award with a perfect four point oh. Congratulations on your state championship win, ladies. All of your hard work and dedication paid off. You make ASD great. And ladies, tell me a little bit about yourselves and what you like best about South High, your parents or cross-country? We added an extra.
My name's Ava Earl. I'm in eleventh grade. And I'd like to say a great thank you to our coaches, Sarah Miller and Jerry Ross. They weren't able to make it today, but they make, like, they work so hard, they work overtime. And it was really awesome to see not just us put in a lot of effort this season, but also them in helping us win. So that was awesome, yeah.
My name is Liz Novakovich. I'm a junior and I'm sorry. Okay, I think that ending the day with cross-country practice is really fun and it's a great way to end the day with all of my friends and having all the support from my coaches and friends and parents is really great, so yeah.
I'm Nancy Beagle. I'm in tenth grade and I love how close our team is and the encouragement we all give each other and our coaches and parents, so thank you.
I'm Robin Miller and I'm in ninth grade and I absolutely love the team this year. They're so supportive and nice and it's just such an amazing atmosphere.
I'm Lucy Young. I'm in eleventh grade and I love running and I love the people I run with.
I'm Ellie Zock and I'm in ninth grade and I think the team really helped me get better with myself and the coaches definitely helped and I just want to thank you guys.
Luke Allman, South High School Principal. I just want to highlight, if you hear the GPA and the grade level and just the level at which they're running, they're just strong all the way across the board, just really solid foundation. There's also about a hundred and fifty other neon coats out there, so it's kind of one big family when you see them at races. It was really fun for me this year because I also got to dawn the warm-up and I got to witness their wins from the seat of my bicycle because I was often clearing the course at the front of the race. So that was really, really fun for me, especially being a new, new principal at South. It was a good way to sort of build community and have a second family. So it was a really cool experience and a lot of them are going to be back next year, so watch out.
also have cake just to celebrate these awards. We're pleased to announce that two ASD schools have achieved Blue Ribbon School honors this year, Aurora and O'Malley Elementary Schools. And we will be celebrating each separately. So let me share a little bit about this. Using standards of excellence evidenced by student achievement, the Blue Ribbon Program honors public and private elementary, middle, and high schools where students achieve very high learning standards or are making notable improvements in closing the achievement gap. Would Principal Egleton as well as, come forward, as well as, I don't know if anyone else, teachers and staff from O'Malley? If you're here, please come forward. All right, this is awesome. This, their award made the news and just to share a little bit, not only, you probably have the data on the number of schools nominated, but just to give you a little mind's eye, Dan Barker and I, we looked up, there are about, it was eighty-nine thousand schools in the U.S. So eighty-nine thousand schools technically were in the running. So many schools were nominated and then less than four hundred actually received the award. And two of the schools, three in Alaska, were in ASD. So congratulations. Let me tell you a little bit about O'Malley. It's a neighborhood school serving kindergarten through sixth grade with a longstanding reputation of quality education and close-knit family feel. The staff specialize in building community within the school and creating a supportive environment fostering growth in all areas. Social and emotional learning is infused throughout content areas so that students feel safe and are able to learn and grow. O'Malley's teachers are intentional and passionate about learning, creating high expectations for students, and instilling a love of learning. The school's communication with families is outstanding, crucial to building relationships, and important work of ensuring student success. This year, O'Malley launched our first French immersion program, starting with kindergarten and building yearly until sixth grade. The school is excited to add this cultural element to O'Malley's family. And in short, O'Malley Elementary is where inspiration happens. Congratulations and you make ASD great.
Thank you very much. O'Malley's a wonderful place, it's a very good family, and we love kids and we're very excited to bring this award to Alaska. And Deena missed our ceremony, so we do have a certificate for her, so thank you very much. So thank you. And I have some wonderful teachers here with me.
I'm Dawn Stiles. I teach first and second grade at O'Malley and I just wanted, I'm just blessed to be at O'Malley, I love that school. I wanted to say to Kelly and the staff that each kid got a certificate with a blue pen at the assembly and it was the best assembly I've ever been to in my life. It was, I mean, we had music and Kelly wanted to replicate what she experienced when she went to Washington, D.C. And we even had kids the next day wearing their pins at school, so it was, it was really special.
I'm Diane Woods. I'm a sped TA and O'Malley's my home. It's the most greatest place in the world to work, so thank you, Ms. Egleton.
Thank you. I'm Keith Perrins. I teach sixth grade at O'Malley and it's a fantastic place to work. Great kids, great family support, great leadership, and great staff. Thank you.
O'Malley Elementary, you make ASD great. All right, we could probably take our picture right here, or unless you want. And we'll get a photo before our next school, but everyone, please stay for cake in a minute. Yeah, do you want, can we do it right here instead of moving? Yeah, because we're a small group, see? And now I did have a little bit about that spoiler alert. We do have another school that is a Blue Ribbon School, Aurora Elementary. Please come forward. Woo! And we have the principal this year who's new as well as our retired principal, Ms. Washington, come back for the celebration. And I was able to make this celebration at Aurora the Wednesday before the holiday that we had. So let me share a little bit about Aurora. It's a K through sixth grade school located on joint base Elmandorth Richardson, or Jaybear as we know it. The school's motto is "Sore to Success" and is reflective of the desire to see students enjoy success in all of their endeavors. They were award winner not only this year, but also in 2013. So they're, you know, doubling it up there, all their trophies. This was a catalyst for the school and community to refocus on how the school parents and wider community can partner to create environments in which students flourish. They proudly serve families of those that serve our country. The school works closely with families to ease transitions for their children of military professionals. Aurora has a comprehensive program of instruction designed to contribute both to the academic and social success of students. And the school offers special education, speech and language support, bilingual services in Spanish, Chinese, Filipino, and Japanese, and ignite classes to provide a higher level of enrichment. Aurora Elementary School is culturally responsive, fostering a climate of respect and care for all, ensuring all students and their families are welcome and included in school activities. It is a great place for students, staff, and families. And ladies and gentlemen, please help me out and let Aurora know they make ASD great. And I'm going to start with you and share a little.
I'm Carrie Anne Langrave and I teach second grade now. I've taught first and the one-two combo. This is, I've been blessed to have been on the staff when we got the award before and under the leadership of Mrs. Washington. I've gotten to grow as a teacher and I work with an amazing staff and an amazing group of students every day.
I'm Mrs. Washington, past principal for Aurora Elementary, and it's been my pleasure to be there and work with a fantastic staff.
I'm Mr. Newsom. I teach sixth grade now. I've taught fifth, or third, second, first. The only thing I haven't taught, kindergarten's at Wonder Park. But yes, we did a good job.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Faust. I currently teach first grade. I also taught kindergarten under Mrs. Washington's leadership when we won the first time, the 2013. I feel called to be a teacher. It is what I am supposed to do. And I feel blessed to be able to work with military families. I don't serve in the military, but I try to give back to my country by taking care of the children of those that do.
I'm Lyndal Cult. I have been at Aurora for twelve years. I am happy and proud to say that I'm part of this, the previous team that we had. I'm also very excited to work with our families up on the base and they are a fabulous group of people and I am just so happy to be here. Thank you.
My name is Anna Walker. I'm the principal of Aurora Elementary. I am very excited to be part of this community and joining in and I'm looking forward to all the exciting things that are going to be happening at Aurora too.
I'm the new kid on the block. I just feel really blessed to be part. My name is Renee Wade and I teach a one-two combo class. And this is a fabulous group of people that I am blessed to work with this year and I'm like Ms. Faust. I feel that being a teacher is what I'm called to do and I love it. And my husband was military and now I get to give back, like she said, to work with their children. So it's a blessing, it's a win-win situation. Thank you.
So Dr. Bishop, a little change. We actually have the Clark Performers here this eve. Yeah, so change of plans. Oh, good, you guys, you guys are in top of it. Look at this. So if you'd like to come forward, and we want to give them our attention, but we will have some cake over there if you want to grab some, but we have. Oh, okay.
Hi, we are some members of the Clark Middle School Informers. We travel throughout our community to inform others about important people, topics, holidays, and observances. Our purpose is not to perform, but to inform our listeners by enlightening, enriching, empowering, and educating them. On behalf of our principal, Mrs. Williams, and our sponsor, Mrs. Peckney, we would like to thank you for extending an invitation to us to present at your school board meeting to provide an overview of MTSS. We hope the Clark Informers will give you new insights or remind you of what you already know about this framework. MTSS stands for Multi-Tier System of Supports. This system helps educators provide academic and behavioral strategies for students with various needs. MTSS grew out of the integration of two other intervention-based frameworks, Response to Intervention, RTI, and Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, PBIS. The integrated instruction model of MTSS uses collected data to assess student needs and provides them with interventions using a tier level of support. The essential components of MTSS are the three tiers of intervention. MTSS uses these tiers to help schools organize level of supports based on intensity so that students receive the necessary instruction, support, and interventions. Thank you. On a daily basis, ASD staff work together to support every student academically, behaviorally, and socially based on their ongoing needs. Some students struggle with academics, others struggle with behavioral challenges, still others struggle with both. So how should schools respond to students with challenges or struggles that interfere with their ability to learn? Many districts have adopted to the MTSS framework of interventions and supports designed to address behavioral and academic challenges. MTSS helps schools identify students early so they may receive assistance quickly. Instead of the waiting-for-failure assessment model, MTSS takes a proactive approach to identifying struggling students. Early assessment and intervention for struggling students can help them, excuse me, can help them catch up with their peers sooner. Thank you. The three tiers of interventions consist of universal, secondary, and tertiary levels. As the largest tier and the, as the largest tier and the foundation for the entire framework, Tier One, the universal level encompasses the majority of the school's student body with core instruction and basic interventions. This structure helps build positive relationships between staff and students. It also includes proactive classroom management strategies aimed at creating a supportive atmosphere. Tier Two, the secondary level, involves a smaller amount of students in the school. At this level, students need and receive extra assistance in meeting behavioral and academic goals which allow them to work toward catching up with their peers. Often, these interventions and supports are delivered in small group settings such as reading groups. Tier Three, the tertiary, tertiary level, works with individual students. This population represents less than ten percent of the student body. These students have significant challenges that do not allow them to respond appropriately to the interventions and supports. with their ability to learn? Many districts have adopted the MTSS framework of interventions and supports designed to address behavioral and academic challenges. MTSS helps schools identify students early so they may receive assistance quickly. Instead of the waiting-for-failure assessment model, MTSS takes a proactive approach to identifying struggling students. Early assessment and intervention for struggling students can help them, excuse me, can help them catch up with their peers sooner. Thank you. The three tiers of interventions consist of universal, secondary and tertiary levels. As the largest tier and the, as the largest tier and the foundation for the entire framework, Tier 1, the universal level encompasses the majority of the school's student body with core instruction and basic interventions. This structure helps build positive relationships between staff and students. It also includes proactive classroom management strategies aimed at creating a supportive atmosphere. Tier 2, the secondary level, involves a smaller amount of students in the school. At this level, students need and receive extra assistance in meeting behavioral and academic goals which allow them to work toward catching up with their peers. Often, these interventions and supports are delivered in small group settings such as reading groups. Tier 3, the tertiary level, works with individual students. This population represents less than 10% of the student body. These students have significant challenges that do not allow them to respond appropriately to the interventions and supports provided for them in Tier 1 or Tier 2. Tier 3 gives individualized support and can include outside agencies such as behavioral counselors or family therapists. School U's MTSS seeks successful educational and behavioral outcome for all the students, regardless of challenges. This may involve significant intervention for a segment of the student population with the goal of moving these individuals and to reduce interventions as they progress. The flexibility of this framework will allow students to move tier to tier as needed without following prescribed timelines.
It is important to understand that MTSS tiers may look quite different from school to school. MTSS focuses on the overall needs of individual students, and what may be a Tier 2 intervention in one school can be a Tier 1 in another. Excuse me, I'm kind of nervous. It is up to each school community to develop an MTSS framework that addresses challenges specific to that school community. If leadership wants to change and improve the overall climate and outcomes of schooling for both students and teachers, there are features of the school culture that have to be adjusted. And if they are not revised, any well-intentioned efforts will be defeated. Thank you.
MTSS creates a positive school environment for all students, which in turn impacts school climate. Positive school climate is the leading indicator for such outcomes as increased academic achievement, increased teacher retention and reduced discipline referrals. The interventions and supports found in MTSS help in relationship building, which is a key factor of student success. Additionally, a supportive school environment allows each student to work through their challenges and to catch up with their peers. Early identification to determine which students need intervention is also necessary. The earlier the identification occurs, the more time will be spent working on improvements. Therefore, schools should conduct universal screenings of all students early in the school year and monitor their progress to determine what is working and what is not. Thank you. Communication and collaboration is a must. Teamwork must be focused on building relationship and using data to improve those relationships. Professional development and coaching is needed along with guidelines for a school-wide approach to interventions. Honesty and transparency must be present. This framework is not about assigning fault to anyone. This is about being honest about student response to instruction and intervention because it is okay for leadership teams to be able to talk openly about problem-solving Too much time has been spent admiring the problems. The best way to, excuse me, the best place to address diverse learning needs is in the instructional process. Even the worst student is a good example of what's not working. A shift in mindsets need to occur. The question is not, what about the student is causing the performance discrepancy, but rather, what interaction of the curriculum, instruction, learners and learning environment should be altered so that the student may learn? Again, MTSS is defined as an evidence-based model of schooling that uses database problem-solving to integrate academic and behavioral instruction and intervention to students in varying intensities based on student needs. Need-driven decision-making seeks to ensure that district resources reach the appropriate students and schools at abatical levels to accelerate the performance for all students to achieve and/or exceed proficiency. In closing, we again thank you for inviting us to present at your meeting today. We hope that you were empowered, enriched, enlightened and educated on our presentation on MTSS, a multi-tiered system of supports. Thank you.
Wow, wow, wow. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give these young folks a hand. Woo! And we have about seven candidates now for the next superintendent of ASD. And this lady works with these students and this MTSS model is literally the research behind our instructional model. But I've been to many functions in our city and around our state where these students share their knowledge in the same format, memorizing information and sharing their knowledge. And I am so impressed. Would you tell us a little bit about them and then we'll have cake? Just, yeah.
Well, as they said, these are 6, 7, 8 grade students. These are some of our informers. They are Clark Middle School students. They research the information. They come up with their own speeches most times and they learn it, they recite it. The one who was reading, had one student who couldn't make it tonight, so she read her part, but she knew her part as well. But they like to go around and share information to community members about what's going on. They shared this at the secondary leadership meeting and they wanted to tell the school board about MTSS. So we just want to share that with you guys. Thank you.
You guys, you make ASD great! And you should be the first in line for cake. Please. Go ahead. You guys are... Have cake. And those students, you need your form signed?
And please help yourself to cake and eat lots of cake. That's good for you. So at this time, I believe that we have our Military Report with Lieutenant Colonel Ben Dainty. Hello, sir.
Good evening. As everyone enjoys cake, I'll have a few words.
Can I pull that mic down just a little bit?
How about that? Is that better? Oh, there we go. Perfect. Okay, so I just have a few things to kind of talk about this evening. One of the things I wanted to reiterate was just the Blue Ribbon Award at the Aurora Elementary School. Colonel Carontai, we're able to go out there and partake in that. Just an anecdotal experience from there during the presentation that Ms. Walker had. She would throw pictures up there of all the different students and there was just pages and pages. And it was kind of fun to watch how the kids would just react and get excited and point people out and call out names. So the kids had a really good time and that was really fun to watch. And again, that's just an example of the excellent students there, but also the teachers and the faculty and the parents and everyone involved. And that's a long-running tradition as we see, a second award in a row. So in about seven years, we'll look for the third award. So now also, as you've noticed, there's snow falling outside. So what we're trying to do is investigate recreational opportunities on the military installation where we can get dependents, the military families and students engaged also with their, the faculty and the teachers at the schools, doing some outdoor activities. So we're teaming up with the Eagle Glen Fitness Park and we're looking for ways to come up with some cross-country ski activities, maybe a weekend event or during the weekdays. So we've partnered up between the schools on the base and also the outdoor recreation program. So we're looking for some fun times to really use those cool opportunities that we have on the base for those military dependents. The final thing I'm going to talk about is how we're looking forward to hosting Dr. Bishop at the Innovation Summit this week on Thursday. So you're going to get a tour of our Innovation Lab, which is a new lab that's been stood up there. It's a great way to look at innovative problem solving. Young airmen can come in with a problem. They can learn how to look at a problem, how to make a hypothesis, how to come up with a potential solution. And then we actually have ways of doing prototyping there as well. So 3D printers and other methods. And we've had these young airmen come in with amazing ideas, troubleshoot the problem and actually build a product that can fix something and go up to the upper air force for, you know, something that can actually be programmed and implemented. So we're looking forward to hosting you there. That should be a good time. And other than that, that's really all I have to bring forward tonight.
Well, thank you. And of course, thank you for your service and all that you do. And we are just always so pleased to see you here and thank you for the report. Any other board comments? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Safe driving.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Sophia for our student. I don't think you've had a meeting since then, but...
Yeah, we haven't, the student advisory board hasn't met since the last school meeting, but we'll be meeting next week on Tuesday.
All right. And I'll be there. And then we have our committee reports. Communications?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Communications Committee has actually had two meetings since our last board meeting. Both were focused on the Legislative Luncheon, which is next Friday, putting plans in place for that. And the other meeting was focused on getting our legislative priorities identified for that luncheon and for next year.
And did we accomplish that?
We did. We really did. And I do want to thank all the board members. Everybody gave input and the process we used, I think, gave everybody voice. And I think we're pretty happy campers today.
Great.
Thank you.
And Ms. Michaela's Finance?
Finance met today. We went through the CAFER with our finance team as well as the representative from BDO and we had a quick presentation on the public survey getting ready to go out shortly. And we do have, our next meeting is scheduled for the 17th at 3:30.
As that will be our hot topic for the next several meetings. Thank you. Mr. Holloman, Governance?
Governance has not met since our last board meeting, a streak that we will ruin next Tuesday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Just an update on our Strategic Planning Committee. Happy to announce that we are going to extend the survey date. I'm not sure what the extension is to when.
January 1st.
January 1st. And it will also be out there in Spanish and Mung. So hopefully we give you another opportunity to fill out that survey. If you know somebody that hasn't done it, please encourage them and we look forward to hearing from everyone. But we are moving along and I believe January 11th, we'll be doing our retreat with AJ, who's coming from Council Great City Schools. And we'll be looking at all the data and the information that we have obtained through our efforts. Is there any other committee or reports? All right. So at this time, we have public testimony. And the board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas and concerns and informs our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. We have a table up front and center with microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You will have three minutes to testify and you may begin speaking when you see the timer on the screen that now appears in front of you. So that's a little easier. And begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it's not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to administration for follow-up. And I'm going to call two names. The first one is Martha Gold Lee. I know I didn't say that right. And welcome. Thank you. And if I could have Jessica Pierce. And Martha, when you see the clock, you can begin. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Martha Gold Lee and I'm here to address the board on two issues, equity and transparency. And I know several of you on the board. And so I'm just going to, I'm here because my conscience mandates it and because I was raised to say, if I can't say to your face something, I should not say it behind your back. And I'm also encouraged by the words of Martin Luther King Jr. when he said, "We won't remember the words of our enemies, but we will remember the silence of our friends." So I feel that I need to speak. Because first, let's talk about transparency. At your last meeting, you voted to include Aquarian's request for $6.5 million on the April bond. I know not all of you voted for it, but my conscience bothers me for those of you who did. This, I believe, is not transparent to the public and as a voter, I feel offended that it was included under earthquake damage, I guess, appearances. Because there are many, many schools out there that really do need to be fixed. And the district abandoned that building in 2019 years ago. And Aquarian decided to occupy it. I have nothing, no ill will against Aquarian whatsoever, but I just feel that it's important to speak that, for transparency, that when they decided to occupy that building, I remember they felt that it was very, they were very fortunate. And yet through neglect of their own, the repairs were not kept up. So I feel like it's kind of an affront to me as a voter to now ask me to add another $6.5 million onto an already very heavy bond. Secondly, there's an equity issue. There are several other charter schools in this district, so I'm wondering why Aquarian was favored. And if I didn't all think better of you, I might think there might be some political motives involved, but I know I don't think there is. So I know Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, which I'm associated with as a founder, is in a leased building that's up for sale. We're scrambling to find funds for a new facility. We have a budget shortfall for next year. So I'm bringing this up because I'm wondering about the board's sense of equity here, putting one charter school ahead of others. one charter school ahead of others. So I'm hoping that these points will cause you to ponder transparency and equity in your decisions, because in this one, I'm finding it very hard to locate it. Thank you.
Thank you. When you see the timer.
Thank you for giving me time to speak this evening. I've had a difficult time putting my words together, as I, like many people in this room, wear several hats within the school district. I am first and foremost a mother of four ASD students. I'm a fifth-grade teacher as well. So I'll start just talking as a mother. My oldest son is a sophomore at Eagle River High School, and he has struggled academically throughout his entire school career. These struggles have been a great source of frustration for him and have greatly affected how he views himself as a learner, and unfortunately, as he gets older, how he views himself as a person. This quarter, though, we had the opportunity to send him to the Second Session at King Tech High School. And a few weeks ago, we attended their open house, and it... I can't say enough about this school. It's incredible. It's phenomenal. The learning opportunities there provide real-world, hands-on, meaningful learning experiences for these kids. Every teacher I met was just the principal, the teachers, they were brimming with enthusiasm. They were excited. Their resources are tremendous. They're passionate. And for the first time ever, my son was excited to show me around his school. That's what education should be, what it should look like. As an elementary school teacher in the district, I'm really struggling. What I pictured as I walked out of the door at King Tech were the uncountable teachers who are also incredible, talented, experienced, passionate people, but are being mandated by our district to teach in a way that they know is opposite of what good teaching is. We're being mandated to teach a script and a program that's... And it's above everything and anything that we do. I'm not sure that you're aware of this, but teacher morale in our district is at an all-time low. I've taught in this district for 17 years, got my pin two years ago, and have never seen it this bad. Just incredible human beings, teachers, they're doubting themselves, and they're doubting their calling, and they're trying... They're asking what's next for them. We're being asked to put students into tight little boxes with numbers attached to them, and every aspect of their learning has to do with that number, that task card, that priority plan, that test score, and the win group that goes along with it. Win, as we know, stands for what I need. So what if what students need to become proficient readers is to actually read and learn how to truly fall in love with books? What if what students need is to delve deep into project-based classrooms brimming with rich history, stories, and ideas? What if what students need is to have STEAM opportunities and to be given the chance to learn in an inquiry-based, minds-on, and hands-on cooperative community? What if what they need is to learn social and emotional skills that allow them to be better people, to accept others' ideas, differences, and opinions? And I'm going to put a shout-out for our school. What if what students need is a school counselor, someone to talk to and to hear them? Research shows that engaged teachers create engaged learners. So what if what teachers need is for the district to truly give us that academic freedom that's stated in our contract? I'm almost done. These district mandated supports in scripts and programs are disengaging irreplaceable teachers, and in turn, they're creating a generation of disengaged learners and limiting our opportunity to educate students for success in life.
Thank you. If I could have Jennifer Lawson?
Wiseman.
Lawson?
Wiseman.
Okay, thank you.
She's going to make me cry. Okay, so where's my...
You'll see the timer right down here.
Over here.
Right in front, yeah.
That's really nice, thank you.
You begin.
Okay, so my name is Jennifer Wiseman, and I teach Grade 1 for ASD. Eight years ago, I achieved my national boards in language arts. Upon completion, I had a principal say to me, "Jennifer, sometimes you can be too cerebral." I was at the time laser-focused on seminal research and data. He made me step back and think. Since the reach for reading adoption, I often wonder if ASD is becoming too cerebral? I understand we must be explicitly teaching skills and strategies concerning the five pillars of literacy. I am in support of explicitly teaching phonics, but for no more than 20 minutes at a time. Lucy Culkin stated in a podcast, "phonics needs to be efficient. It can't be all the time, so there's no time for reading and writing." Jim Cunningham has written a really nice article, and he points out that 10 years ago, we had a giant experiment in phonics, so the whole nation was forced to do systematic phonics and reading first. And then the government hired somebody to study what was the effect of this total obsession of the systematic of phonics where people were doing it for 45 minutes a day. What were the results? The reading flatlined. The results were no improvement in reading. Cunningham said, "What conclusion can we draw from the reading-first failing? Is it that phonics is not foundational?" No, phonics is foundational, but a foundation is not the same thing as a house, and it was too much phonics, and it wasn't phonics in context of reading and writing. I envision students building, playing, and doing as they explore, problem-solve, and communicate with one another. It's during this time when students are learning how to make and keep friends and build their acquisition of language and literacy. Ariel Johnson, a Heinemann Fellow, refers to oral language as the manipulative to reading and writing, much like how Unifix cubes are used as manipulatives during math exploration. If students do not have that language piece, they do not have anything to attach their phonics instruction to. I've been teaching with striving readers during wind time for three years. I hear my students say, "I'm bored, and I don't want to do phonics." Recently, I had a student crawl under a table. When asked, "How can I make school better for you?", the student stated, "More play." I recently received an email that stated, "Last night, in my daughter's prayers, she said, 'Thank you for helping me learn to read fast and my class to read fast.'" Bottom line, reading... Readers read for meaning, not speed. Reggie Routman states, "I think the human factor is missing in the dyslexic debate. Its mission and the overemphasis on decoding to the exclusion of, 'Hey, there's a reader there, there's this person.'" I challenge the Anchorage School Board to "Trust your teachers, teachers whom are in the trenches seeing what's working and not working." Ted Dintersmith, author of the book titled "What School Could Be," writes, "If you live abroad, you'll appreciate what foreign leaders tell me. We get our best ideas from America. The difference is that we act on them, and you don't." And I just want to put in a plug for Raymond Wood. If you want to raise test scores, Raymond Wood needs a counselor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Superintendent Sutcliffe.
Thank you, Madam President. And I was glad that the Clark informers were able to share their information in regard to MTSS. And I believe that Jenny Knudsen and Dr. Knudsen and Dr. Johnson Strumpler worked with them in the school to present that with the secondary teachers. So that was pretty fun. The next item is really brief, and I just wanted to share that the district is supporting Assembly Person, I think they use now, Person instead of Assemblyman and Assemblywoman, Assembly Persons Dyson and Kennedy next week on Monday night, the same time as this meeting, at their town hall. And it's structured to have pro joining Eagle River and Chuyak, and then pro not joining the two schools. They are going to have panels. They've also asked the district to provide some fact-based information. As we all know, and we've shared last time, in regard to social media, that's not the best place to get evidence-based factual information all the time. It is an emotional situation, and so they really want to address it with the community to see what their future is and what they would recommend. I shared last time that they would just have a discussion and a recommendation of what they found out as Assembly people. So we will have our team, we're actually doing the mics and all the supports to be able to provide that information to the board as well. And in addition, this evening, Eagle River High School, we heard from Assembly Person Constant that they are using the political process quite well to change the name in front of their school. It's Yosemite Drive right now, and they are going before the Assembly to change that to Wolf Den Drive. Not Wolf Pack, but Wolf Den, because Wolf Pack's already taken. So Wolf Den Drive, and they actually are pretty savvy, because he believes that it may pass. So our students at Eagle River High School are participating in that through their government and activism. So just wanted to share that with everyone, and we look forward to hearing from the community at the town hall meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And moving on, Ms. Hildy.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD Memorandum Number 054 Personnel Report, November 5, 2019, executive session minutes.
Second.
Board members, please vote. And so at this time, before our action items, I just want to read a statement on procedures for public testimony, and they are as follows. An action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President and then seconded by another board member. I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicate you are interested in providing testimony, I will call your name to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk, and you'll see a timer on the screen in front of you to monitor your time remaining and inform me of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote, before finally calling for an official vote, and the vote results will be displayed to my right.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 066, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019, and authorize the superintendent to forward this report to the Commissioner of Education, State of Alaska, and the Anchorage Assembly.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 066? Seeing no public testimony, is there any board discussion? Seeing no board discussion, could I have the student vote, please?
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that Memorandum 066 passes unanimously with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 013, and authorize the superintendent to accept a continuation grant from the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Indian Education, in the amount of $496,685.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 013? Seeing no public testimony, is there any board discussion? Ms. Mitchell?
I'm super excited about this program, and I love seeing the kids perform. I'm just curious. It looks like we have some capacity available in that program, whether there's... If there's anything we're doing to help fill that, or I assume there are some efforts out there.
Brandon, would you like to speak on recruitment for that program?
Thank you, Madam President and Dr. Bishop. So, yeah, we have the first Indigenous immersion program in an urban setting, to my knowledge, in ASD. And we selected UPIC for a number of reasons, one of which was the CITC and Cook &amp; Lit Native Head Start preschool programs for ages 0 through 3 and through ages 3 through 5. So far, we've filled all the seats that, I mean, everyone that has been in the lottery has accepted. So we continue to do outreach. We do have a built into the grant, we have a CITC family advocate that is doing a lot of public outreach, and we continue to do that in every opportunity that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam President, that was Brandon Locke, the director.
Thank you, Mr. Locke.
I don't think he said his name for the record.
Any other discussion? Okay, student vote, please.
Yes.
And board members, please vote. And that Memorandum 013 passes with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 063, and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant award from the Alaska Department of Education, Early Development, for $1.275 million.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 063? No public testimony, is there any board discussion? Mr. Holloman?
I was just going to say, this is not the motion that I wanted to speak to.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not. I was going to speak to the next one.
Oh, okay.
And I got distracted by my water bottle. I apologize.
All right. Well, I'll speak to it. I think it's a great program. I'm excited about the continuation of the grant. It really does help our students in need and provides them with some extra supports and help. Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, I completely agree with that. I'm just curious, the sites that have been extended one year, is that... Do we have the possibility that that will keep going year to year, or is it going to end at the end of this next year?
Through the President, that's correct, just given the funding and the additional support year to year. And also, the programs like this, we shared in the Aspen Report, that community partners for before and after school are essential in how students learn. So it's pretty special that we can... That the state and federal government can continue to support that.
It is pretty special. All right. Any other board discussion? All right, student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that Memorandum 063 passes unanimously.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 068, and pass revisions to Board Policy 3513.3, Tobacco, Vape, E, Cigarette, Alcohol, and Drug-Free Campus.
Second.
Is there any testimony on Memorandum 068? Is there any board discussion? Ms. Holloman?
All right. I was just going to say to the board, this comes to you through the Governance Committee. Doesn't really represent a policy change so much, but the language is shifted to make sure that vaping and e-cigarettes are included. Our previous language really addressed smoking or conventional cigarettes, and this simply updates our policy so that we don't have any legal loopholes for people to slip through.
And I don't know if everyone's aware, but the first case of vaping lung disease, one of our teenagers here in south, I believe it's southeast Alaska. So it's the first case that we've seen in Alaska, and probably not the first case, but it's the first case that's been able to be diagnosed. So, Ms. Bellamy?
Yes. Madam Chair, in the absence of policy prior to now, I know if they were vaping like marijuana, that was a no-brainer, I mean, in terms of consequence. At what point is this going to be immediately? Is immediately in place the policy?
Mm-hmm.
And how will we get the students? How will the schools are going to be getting the word out to all the students and parents?
Through the President, yes. And we're looking to work with students to support that education and knowledge. So it'll be communicated, sent out right away to principals so that they know, but also, it's really bigger than that, just not about the consequence, but about the health reasons. We're trying to do a positive. Because we are concerned, we don't want to... We don't want to simply discipline without support and knowledge and education.
Right. Okay. Any other board comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
What was happening before the policy change? Because you mentioned that there was, like, a legal loophole there. Was there... Is this still... Was it the same consequence for, like, smoking or something?
Correct. So we looked at these with tobacco, but not all vaping products have tobacco. So technically, you could vape without tobacco. You could vape with, I mean, marijuana, but that was also covered by drugs. But there's other vaping flavors and chemicals that are also damaging with the smoke. So any vaping whatsoever, whether it's tobacco or not tobacco, is covered.
Right. And I will actually be at the Student Advisory Council and talking about this subject, so it's very important. Any other discussion? All right, student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. Board members, please vote. And that memorandum 068 passes with seven yays. We move on to our non-action items. Is there any non-action item that board members would like to pull at this time? Seeing no non-actions pulled, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hildy?
Are we going to have the, are we going to do the progress report in health centers separately, or do we need to pull it to?
If you want to pull it to talk about it.
We just, we did, I don't know if anybody else has.
Well, it was a report only, but if there was something in there that you wanted to discuss.
Okay, I wasn't sure, no, I just wasn't sure. That's all, I just wasn't sure.
It always concerns me with the public health centers because funding is always an issue. And it is something, if you looked at the report, it provides mental health services.
Yeah, let's pull it, because let's just say like a few words, so.
Okay, so, I will pull ASD memorandum 057 for discussion. Are there any other? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all right. Then, since I pulled that item, I guess I'll speak to it a little bit. But what it is, if you read the report, I was on that committee last year, and funding is always an issue with this and trying to keep that program going. We have it at four schools currently, as you read in the report. They provide a great service to our students, they're seeing more and more, you know, it used to be like just for health physicals and that sort of thing, but they're seeing more different things that they're treating, you know, strep throat or something like that, that they're actually able to see students. Did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted somebody to say a little quick something, just so that we, you know, have the information out there.
Right.
Not everybody reads their form. I mean, we do, I'm just seeing the public.
Okay. And so, actually, if you looked at medical visits, therapeutic counseling visits for 38 students, medical visits at Begishaw is 147, Bartlett 92, East 107, and then other, it has eight, for a total of 486 medical visits. So, that's, definitely shows the need that they are meeting for our students, so we wish we had more of it. Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the opportunity, and I also appreciate the candor of this report. There was one, two, two statements I find particularly interesting, and I'm also very grateful for the counseling, because we do know we need more counseling in our schools and we're very hard-pressed to afford it. But there is frequent concern in the community about the expansion that this represents as far as the duties of the schools. And in the report, it does point out that a comparison between students receiving services and students referred for students who declined them showed there was no statistically significant difference between attendance, suspensions, or GPAs. And I appreciate that analysis. And additionally, there is a concern here, because as with all these type of programs that start with the best intentions and some sort of outside funding source, apparently in the spring of 2019, the program lost one of its grant sources and the ASDA, it doesn't say how much, the ASD provided temporary funding while other funding options were explored. I was wondering how much that funding was and whether that was a loan or an actual grant to this, because when this was approved, we were, it was told to us that it was not going to cost the school district anything.
Through the President, and I'll ask, my understanding, do you have that number? I believe it was due to the insurance, and we covered some insurance, so the differential is what, but the shortfall that they had was 25,000, but if we included it under our insurance, it wouldn't, that would have been for them to afford separate insurance, but including them under ours was kind of an in-kind service, if you could kind of qualify that.
I can get the actual dollar amount as to what it was worth, but Dr. Bishop is correct. It really was, we needed them to have a $1 million insurance coverage and they didn't have it and couldn't get it at the time, so it was either an immediate closure or worked that out, but I can get that number.
So, the amount and the value is different. So, the value to them was about 25 grand, but the amount that we paid, I don't believe, was that, because we are a larger system, we were able to couple it.
So, the funding source that they lost was not a factor then?
Heather, are you here?
Heather Ireland, yeah.
Can you come forward? I thought I saw you out there. Heather Ireland can probably answer some of those questions for you, Mr. Donnelly. She's a program director.
Do I touch her?
Yeah, just turn it on.
Where the mouth is, like speaking?
No, I'm the, this part.
There's like a mouth with like.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, okay. So, yeah, so, last year we were negotiating about insurance requirements, and there were some increases, also decreasing, or sorry, increasing the frequency of physicals, like, was a pretty significant revenue hit to us. But in, since 2017, we've invested, sorry, quick math, about $90,000 in the infrastructure of the Bartlett and East clinics. And so, yeah, there was a contribution from the district of 25,000 to help offset those infrastructure investments that we made and to help with the insurance costs. So, we did not get our grant from Providence in 2019, but we were encouraged to apply for 2020, and my fingers are crossed that we will receive that. We're also having a fundraiser in the spring to help hopefully cover that difference, but the revenue that we generated in, from billing revenue for medical services in the first quarter of the school year helped decrease the gap that we had in our revenue minus expenses.
And through the President, to member Donnelly, the change in health physicals came from OSA, I believe they went from 12 months to 18 months?
Correct.
Yeah, and so then you then decreased the amount of students who need them every month, because that was a, that was one of the, in the feedback, one of the major appreciation of parents, it got more kids involved in school and activities, and it was convenient, and it happened right there. So, when OSA, which is the state-run, they changed their regulation, and when they changed their regulation, we didn't need as much, they didn't need one every year, they need one every 18 months now.
Ms. Mitchell?
So, I'm just curious, the Volunteers of America who help with the mental health support, are they social workers, are they just like 19-year-olds who graduated from?
No, so their name is somewhat misleading. They are paid clinicians who have master's degrees, yeah.
Yeah, we're lucky to have them.
Yes, we do also, at least this year, have a UAA doctoral student who's doing some work as well, but, so not paid, but also an adult, not just a volunteer.
So, the other question I had, I just, looking at the number of medical visits, the clinics are not open every day, is that correct?
Correct, we're about one day a week at each school.
Okay, because as I look at these numbers, I'm thinking 180 school days, 132 visits, that seems really, but given that it's just one day a week, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, and that frequency change from 12 to 18 months made it possible for us to bring East High on last year, because we weren't overwhelmed with kids saying, it's been 12 months and I need a physical. They kind of got a little bit of a cushion there.
Well, it's a great service and it's one I never want to see go away, so thank you.
We're doing what we can.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other board comments? All right, did our student leave? Okay, she's here. But let's go ahead, board vote.
There's no vote.
Oh, there's no vote, sorry, there's no vote, but getting ahead of myself. All right, so at this time, we have any new business? Any new business that board members would like to bring up? Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, I appreciated the discussion at the work session this afternoon regarding the different possibilities for restructuring the municipal districts for both the assembly and for the school district, I mean, the school board. I really think this is something that merits further examination. I do think there's serious constitutional questions the way we're elected at large and district-wide right now, and I think the assembly has recognized they've got serious problems also with their failure to rotate the single-member downtown district, because to maintain a balance of, a constitutional balance of voting power for all the citizens of Anchorage, they needed to be rotating that downtown district. I do think the superior way to address that is by going to single-member districts rather than adding an additional assembly person. But I do think there's a lot of merit in considering the constitutional infirmity of the current at-large district for the school board. Point out that there have been other districts around the country fielding lawsuits regarding this kind of structure, and the superintendent did point out during the work session that both Kenai and Matso have gone to some form of districting, whether it's a combination with some at-large and some in districts or all the specific districts. So, I think it's an important thing that should be on our horizon to keep in mind for some potential future. I would anticipate that if the board chose to take some action on it, it'd be in the form of a resolution to the assembly, because the assembly has the authority to propose changes to the charter to the voters.
I appreciate that, Mr. Donnelly, and I do agree with you, I think it's something we should have a discussion on, and as soon as we get through the budget, that'll be the first thing on our work session. And strategic planning, yes. Any other new business from other board members? Mr. Holloman, you have anything? Okay, all right. Well, with that, this is final opportunity for public testimony. If there's anyone that would like to testify at this time, please come forward.
Hi, Marnie. Hi, Marnie Hartill. I'm here for Anchorage Education Association. Tom Claymire is in Savannah, Georgia. He wishes you all well. He's representing at the National Council of Urban Education Associations. And just wanted to share that AEA does have a position of support. Since 2016, we have resolutions and new business items stating specifically that AEA supports school-based health centers in our public schools to expand healthcare access to schools that serve underrepresented and economically disadvantaged students, and it is a priority item for our Human Civil Rights Committee. I have nothing else to share, but thank you again, I just wanted to give greetings from AEA.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay, so we know, seeing no one. Now we go to school board administration comments and communications. Any comments, any communications, any good news? Okay, well, I'll share something. I always have something to share. And then Andy too, okay. I was invited and did go, I got to sit next to the governor and his wife, to the Pacific Islanders Celebration for Volunteer Awards. It was very cool, Lucy Hansen oversaw that. Lot of great awards given to our students for volunteerism in the community and in their church and that sort of thing. So, it was, at one point Lucy had so many door prizes, she was throwing T-shirts out to the audience, so it was really quite fun. We had some entertainment by some of the students with their cultural dance, and it was very nice. And I got an opportunity to invite the governor to come tour our schools, so we'll be sending out that invite, and so I'm looking forward to him coming and touring with, hopefully, Dr. Bishop and I.
In January.
In January, right, yeah, after Christmas. All right, and Ms. Holloman?
I was just going to say, I got to stop by Willa Elementary for an open house on their STEM program, and I'd never thought a whole lot about STEM for kindergarteners, but it works. And it's project-based, the level of engagement was really interesting to watch, because I don't think of kindergartners as being formally engaged in a lot of things as a whole group. I think of them more as like a box full of kittens. But it really was neat to see a whole classroom really, really into the project they had in front of them and working on it. And it's great, it's a neat thing going through the whole school, and I think could be a great model. I'm a big believer in people building things.
And just to add on to that, that's actually a program that supports, we put Project Lead the Way at East High School, and that is the elementary version of Project Lead the Way, and we are really moving towards and pushing in coding in our schools, and that was a mini presentation of building up to coding, that part of it. It was also part of a larger project by two principals in our schools to ensure that, and they're both former Ignite teachers, having different ideas about the way that we do an honor-gifted ad, that we could have school-based programs that really engage all learners, especially those that are underrepresented. So, it really fits in line with that alignment that we're talking about, especially on the east side, and it's a great, they're going to do third through fifth, I think in a couple of weeks, so it's just another addition of Project Lead the Way, so just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you. Any other board comments, staff or administration comments? I always ask you guys. Okay, well, with that, okay, well, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, hold on, Mr. Stock has something.
Be careful what you ask for. I just wanted to update the board just briefly, because I got a text, I think the school board just got one tonight. There may be some families coming forward to express their appreciation for the recess and lunch pilot piece, and I just wanted to let you all know that, just briefly, the status of the evaluation piece, because that's starting to roll forward. The professor from Harvard that's working with us at her cost through grants will be up here in December, here before break, and the process of meeting with parents at six pilot schools is underway. Interviews with all the principals is underway by a research group paid for by a grant from the Alaska Public Health Group, and so there's a lot of things that we're doing to evaluate that. Our plan is to get that evaluation to you in January, when the professor and her students are finished putting everything together. But just to let you know that there's starting to be interest in promoting the pilot and people wanting to get in front of you and talk about it, and just to let you know, we are evaluating it, and I've been trying to ask them to let us finish the evaluation, because we wait until the evaluation before we bring changes to policy recommendations to you, but that's all underway, and I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stock, I appreciate that. All right, anyone else? Okay, well, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Wow. You may.
Okay, adjourned.